Well, good evening, everyone. This is the Minutrista City Council Regular Council Meeting from May 3rd at 7:00. And I'm calling the meeting to order. Our first order of business is I'm going to ask our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, to say pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lindquist. So, second order, we're going to do introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and council members present this evening are Ann McGregor here and John Trumperland.
Here.
And Pam Mortenson.
Here.
I believe Kathleen Refkin will not be able to join us this evening, she had a family emergency. So we'll move on to staff. We have our city administrator, Mike Barone.
I am here.
And we have our Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
Hi, I'm here.
And our Chief of Police, Paul Falls.
I am here.
Community Development Director, David Abel.
I am here.
And our city planner, Nick Olson.
I am here.
And our Finance Director, Graham.
I'm here.
And a Director of Administration, Ally Paulford.
I'm here.
Chris Lindquist, who is our city clerk.
I am here.
Then we have our city engineers this evening. With us, with WSB is Allison Fousky.
I'm here.
And Adam Gadebois.
Here.
And our city attorney, now I have to ask, is it Ron or Andrew?
I think both.
Okay. We have city attorney with us, Ron Beatty.
Here.
And Andrew Biggerstaff.
Here.
All right, thank you. I think that's everyone. So with that, we'll move on to approval of our agenda. I only have one change. So we'd like to swap A and B under business items. So A becomes B, and B becomes A. So we're just gonna flip them and do them in reverse. So if that's okay with the council, I have no other changes or additions, anybody else? All right, hearing none? Then is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one minor change?
This is John, so approved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. Is there a second?
I'll second, this is Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. So Mr. Trumperland made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor.
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland.
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Motion passes for all. Next, we move on to our special presentations. We have none this evening, so we'll move on to our person to be heard. We have a number of people here this evening that would like to speak, and we also have an email that Mr. Barone will be reading. So what we're gonna do first is, Ms. Bruce asked to speak regarding, well, I'm not sure what, but Ms. Bruce asked to speak, and then I know we have several people here regarding a view shed issue over on Morningside, and those people will be next. So when you speak, you'll need to make, you'll need to state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak to the council and address the council. With that, Ms. Bruce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Bruce, hold on just a minute.
Before Shannon, before you start, could I ask all the people that have called in to mute your microphones if it is not your turn to speak? Because we get a lot of the background noise from wherever you're seated in participating in this, in this, in this meeting, and so it becomes very difficult for the speaker to be heard. So if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barone.
And I know we agreed on only having one child.
Okay, Mike, you're gonna have to mute some people, thank you.
I just did.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Morten, Ms. Bruce, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This is Shannon Bruce, I live at 7500 Fielding Trail, and I'd like to talk about the nuisance ordinance that was discussed at the work session, and thank you all for taking out the contagious disease part of that ordinance. I think that was egregious, and I'm glad it was taken out, so thank you for that. I still have a lot of concerns about this ordinance, because it came before the council twice while I was on the council, and both times it was determined that it wasn't necessary, and nothing has changed between now and then. It's, except that probably the two most vocal council members aren't on the council anymore that were in opposition to it. But I showed this ordinance to an attorney, a friend of mine who's an attorney, and these are his words, not mine, about this ordinance. He called this a quote "massive power grab" end quote, and said that it wouldn't stand up to a due process violation if anybody took the city to court. This ordinance would not stand up to a due process violation. And I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but it doesn't take one to see this place as the council in the position of writing the law, choosing who it applies to, and then acting on their own as the judge and jury for each violation. And that's precisely why it wouldn't stand up to a due process violation. So also adding 18 additional public nuisances is absolutely absurd with the intentionally vague language. So as to make these apply, you could make these ordinances apply, these violations, these public nuisances apply to virtually any Minutrist resident in Minutrista. And they're just overly vague, and it's egregious, it's just absolutely ridiculous. And there is no urgency here. This is a contrived urgency because of one particular property that we all heard about twice while I sat on the council, and we decided then that this ordinance wasn't necessary, and it's not necessary now. And I would urge a no vote on this ordinance when it comes before the council for a full vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So now we'll move on to the other issue that people would like to speak on. And as I stated before, there's an email that was asked to be read into the record, so I'm gonna have Mr. Barone do that first, and then after that, I'm going to give Mr. and/or Mrs. Hecker time to address the council, and then after that, I believe their neighbor, the individual that's building the new home, will have an opportunity to speak as well. So let's start with Mr. Barone. Again, we're gonna try and limit this to three minutes, so we appreciate your being concise and to the point, and also don't forget you're gonna have to state your name and address for the record. Mr. Barone.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council. Again, this email came to me this morning from Mr. Tom Notch of 1250 Morningview Drive, and it reads as follows. The property at 1230 Morningview Drive changed hands last year, and it was obvious that a demo and rebuild of a home on this Jennings Bay Lake Shore property would be happening. My neighbor at 1240 Morningview Drive requested site plan documents as far back as November 2020, but received nothing until after the site plan had already been approved, showing an obvious serious error on the line of sight by the city. Please see the attached earlier survey of the 1240 Morningview property, as well as the new survey for residents under construction at 1230 Morningview. The 1240 Morningview Drive survey shows the line of sight calculated from a proposed seven-foot deck, which my neighbors were told was the largest they could have on their proposed new house. The property at 1230 Morningview line of sight is calculated using the existing non-conforming 14-foot deck. I believe this is wrong, and the proposed house will infringe upon the line of sight of neighbors to both sides. Had the city shared the documents when they were submitted and before they were approved, the proposed home plans could have been altered to comply with city code. Furthermore, in studying the plans that were submitted, oversight of the calculation of impervious lot coverage is simply not happening, which results in significantly more surface water runoff than city code specifies. This is happening citywide, which means water runoff is a much more serious problem than it should be across the entire city. Foundations have not been poured for the deck and sunroom on the south side of 1230 Morningview Drive, so it is not too late to stop construction to fix the city's line of sight error and impervious lot coverage errors. I hope you'll encourage city staff to correct their errors on this project and take measures to enforce city code accurately on this and future building permit applications. And that's, thank you for your service from Tom Notch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barone. We'll move on to Mike and Iris Hecker, and again, you'll have to just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Iris Hecker at 1240 Morningview Drive. Thanks for listening to us. We've lived at 1240 Morningview Drive for 28 years. 2008, we had planned to remodel, and when we did the survey, we found out that our deck was not in compliance. It was 14 feet, and we were told that it should be seven feet. In 2020, the new homeowner on 1230 Morningview decided to tear down their house, and so in 2021, the owner submitted the survey to the city, and in determining the line of sight calculation, they used the non-compliant deck measurement of 14 feet instead of the seven feet allowed by the city. This results in the new home's lakeside line of sight being five feet out of compliance. The new owner was made aware of the mistake, informed me that the city had approved the plan, and he was not considering any changes to the approved plan. He added that the sunroom, which is located in the lakeside projection, would have windows on three walls which he felt mitigated our line of sight issues. We respectfully disagree, while there are significant lot coverage errors and site drainage issues. On the 1230 site survey, which are two minutes to go into at this time, our number one primary problem is the lakeside line of sight intrusion. The home values on Morningview Drive are primarily driven by the expansive views of Jennings Bay. The line of sight code was one of the key reasons we purchased our home in Minutrista after moving from obstructed lake views and previous properties in Spring Park. The sunroom deck footings approved by the 1230 Morningview permit will devastate our lake views and significantly decrease the value of our property. By Minutrist approving the 1230 Morningview sightline as an exception to the law results in ruining the neighborhood we love. So I would also like to bring out the fact that if you look at the surveys that are supplied on the 1240 Morningview Drive survey, please look at the south side, you'll see that the proposed deck was seven feet, and that 14 is originally what it actually was, but we had to cut it back to seven feet. And then if you refer to the 1230 Morningview Drive, just on the south side, you'll see that the survey used a non-compliant measurement of 14 feet. The setback, so anyway, the survey, the surveyor, and then the city made a mistake by using the non-conforming measurements to prove the deck. Two wrongs don't make a right, and this will have a domino effect where now other structures will be expanding toward the lake with structuring views of homeowners that have been here a long time. So, and then also I'd like to bring up, if you had two non-conforming garages towards the road, and you wanted to build, another property member wanted to build a garage between the non-conforming, they cannot use the non-conforming garages without a variance. So I guess we're confused that we can use, that the non-conforming was used, and we appreciate your time on this, and thanks for your help. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Hecker. We have also, I believe, is it Ron Rosso?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor. Ron Rosso, and I'm here with my wife, Elle, and we're going to be living at 1230 Morningview Drive. Just wanted a little bit of time to give us some background and introduce ourselves to the Madam Mayor and the city council. We've been in a search for Lake Home for quite some time, and we absolutely fell in love with this location, as well as the city of Minutrista. And we wanted to, and we are still, having a lot of communication with our adjacent neighbors. Initially, when, last fall, when we started the design, we, we went out and met with our neighbors and asked them about a 10-foot setback, if they would be willing to, you know, consider that and that, and the response that we got back was no, that they would not. And so we took that into consideration, we wanted to honor that, and so we went back and redesigned our home so that it met every criteria and every setback requirement that the city of Minutrista has. And so what we have now is a build, which we believe is a very beautiful home with no variances whatsoever, is completely conforming to everything, every rule and regulation and ordinance that the city of Minutrista has. We were able to complete the design then in January, we submitted them to the city, they did over a six-week review of our plan, and they approved that plan about mid-February, again, with no restrictions, no variances were required. And then on the other side, we also understand that this is an area where the surface water overflows the existing street and down the two sides of my property. And I've been reaching out to neighbors on both sides to be able to work with them to grade an opportunity of a ditch-like system that would go down and actually address the drainage issues, and that has been occurring for many years, that would help both property owners, both to my east and to my west, to the west. And so I'm gonna continue to do that, so that it's a better result for all of us. So with that, again, I just wanted to introduce ourselves, give you some insights as to how we're approaching this, and I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have a number of other callers, I'm going to make an assumption, but I don't want to, but I want to give everybody an opportunity. Some of you, I'm sure, are here regarding the business items that we're going to be discussing, but if there's anybody else that has, would like to address the council on this particular issue, you can do so at this time. Is there anybody else? Okay, I'm going to assume that that's everybody for that issue. What I'm gonna do...
No, we were muted. This is Mike Hecker, this is Mike Hecker, and I'm Iris's husband. And basically, I just wanted to say that all of the requirements really haven't been met here. The surface lot coverage, which is limited to 25% in a shoreline district, is being exceeded. The roof overhangs are not being considered as they are required to be in the Minutrista code, and I'd like to point that out. Also, there are no sidewalks shown on the residence, and those areas weren't included in the survey drawing. The area way for the fire exit was not included in the areas as well. So the area of the hardcover, as it is right now with the garage extension, does exceed the 25% by a fair amount, and I think that that should be looked at by the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hecker. So I'm gonna ask maybe Mr. Olson, I think you are the one that have been kind of working on this and involved in this. Do you, or maybe Mr. Abel, want to weigh in and give the council just a kind of a brief summary and background on the issue?
I can go, Madam Mayor, this is David, David speaking here. So, and council, this is obviously nothing new, you've seen numerous emails on this, and Mr. Olson did a good job of summarizing the situation a week or two ago to you, all at the council level, given the same topics that were just raised here. So just, you know, for point of clarification, they mentioned the plan that was approved back in 2008. Just to point out that that plan is not what is there now, the seven-foot deck is not there, now it is the 14-foot deck that is there. And so when a surveyor goes out to do the existing conditions, they're gonna survey what's there now, and not the hypothetical scenario. So what the ordinance says, the repairing view ordinance says, is that you take the two furthest, most protrusions on the adjacent houses of the lot which is being built, and you draw the line in between those two structures, or, as we all know, there is the second part to that, you can take the average, and actually you can use whichever is most favorable in the scenario. In this case, what is being used is that line that's been drawn between the two adjacent structures, and that in fact is what is being used for the repairing view. It does not say anything in the ordinance regarding a non-conforming structure, and actually technically speaking, that their deck now, because of this new permit, is no longer non-conforming, given the scenario that's playing itself out. So again, it isn't specific to talk about whether it's conforming or not, all it says is it cannot go closer than 75 feet, which is the required lakeside setback. In regards to the hardcover, we've followed all the previous practices and policies in reviewing building permits in citywide when it comes to Lake Shore, the Shoreley Overlay District, and citywide in terms of hardcover calculations. It does not specifically say that overhangs are to be counted in the hardcover, it says roof. And actually, we do have some allowances for overhangs to go into the required side setbacks. So it's been the policy before Nick or nor I ever came to Minutrista that overhangs weren't counted as part of that. So again, as Nick had pointed out in his email in a summary to the council a week or so ago, we as staff felt, feel that it does meet all of the city code requirements, and that is indeed why we went ahead and issued that building permit like we did.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abel. So real quick, does staff have any questions of, or does staff, does council have any questions of staff? All right, so basically, the issue here is that at 2040, the Hackers applied for a building permit back in 2008, and their permit was based on the existing structures to their right and left, south or whatever directions it is, both, to both sides of their property. And based on that, with the sightline ordinance that we have and had in place, they were restricted to their, to a seven-foot deck. However, they never went forward with their project. So they never started or completed their building project, and their 14-foot deck remained. So I think it's quite clear that staff has correctly applied our city codes in this case, and they or the council, we can't use a site plan from 2008 or 12 years ago that was never implemented. You know, if the Hackers had built their structure and only had a seven-foot deck there, then that's what would have been used today. But because they didn't, according to our codes, they have, the city staff has to use the most protruding spot on their house, which is their 14-foot deck. So to determine the setback, the way the Hackers would like staff to determine it would be a what-if scenario and quite arbitrary, and if the council were to take any action on this to that effect, or contrary to the building permit that was issued to the property owner at 2030 Morningview, we would be setting the city up, in my opinion, for a battle, a legal challenge, one that we may not win. However, I would say this, with this new home at 2030, the Hackers, they may actually see some potential, if you will, improvements to their property since they would now actually, as Mr. David Abel pointed out, their deck is now conforming, and if they wanted to go forward with their plans from 2008, they actually would be able to build most likely a larger deck. So with that said, if anyone else feels differently, the Hackers or anyone else does have the opportunity to appeal this decision, and that is through the Board of Adjustment, which is our planning commission, and there's a process that they can follow. So if the council is in agreement with staff and agrees that this is done correctly, I think we can move on to our next business item. Council, any comments or questions? All right, so with that, we will move on to our next item. I'll just ask one more time, are there, is there anybody else on the call this evening that would like to address the council on another issue that's not on the, that's not on the agenda? All right, so we will move on. So next on the agenda is our consent agenda. It consists of approving our work session meeting minutes from April 19th, 2021. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from April 19th, 2021. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to approve the status change from probationary to full-time permanent and step increase for Nikki Meyer, who is our newest police officer. And E is a resolution to approve a step increase for Trevor Barrett in our Public Works Maintenance Department. And F is approve our variance at 395 County Road 110 North. And G is approve our second, a second home agreement for 394 County Road 110 North. And H is a resolution to approve a variance at 2565 Highland Road. And I believe that is all of our consent agenda. Also, are there any? All right, hearing none, is there a motion then to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H?
This is Ann, so moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. So Ms. Mc... Yep, yep, I got that, thank you. So Ms. McGregor made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. All those will signify with aye. In favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Whalen, the mayor, will vote aye. Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Kathleen Refkin is absent this evening, so motion passes for all. So next, we move on to our public hearings. We have three liquor license renewals, I believe that's, Ms. Lindquist? Can you hear me?
Chris, are you there? You need to unmute yourself. I know she was having a little bit of trouble earlier, so...
Okay. Well, let's give it a couple more seconds here. Otherwise, is Ally able to do the presentation?
I wanna take a crack at it, Ally.
Hold on, Mike.
Okay.
So we have three renewal liquor license...
She said she's not having audio issues. Chris, can you hear us? Can you say something?
No, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yeah, now we can.
Ah, we can hear you. All right, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know if somebody else had muted me, and I couldn't, I don't know, I was gonna get unmuted. Anyway, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Earl Oaks, WRA, and Cox Culinary Arts doing , have all...
I think we lost her again. Chris, Chris, you're breaking up really bad. So let me ask, so... Um so let let me ask, um so Ally, do you, you can do it or else we might have to-
Twenty-one, twenty-two licensing period. And liquor licenses are good from June first, twenty twenty-one to May thirty-first, twenty-two.
Uh hold on, we didn't get all of that, so, because you were breaking up really bad. So again, uh Ally, can you fill in or else we'll have to move it to a little bit later in the agenda and come back to it?
Madam Mayor, I would say move it to the to later on the agenda. I'm having internet issues as well.
All right, so what we're gonna do is I'm gonna move the public hearing. Uh first of all, I'm gonna ask, is there any?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I switched, I called in on a different on the other number, so should I restart? Did anybody hear anything?
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, try it again.
Madam, okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Burl Oaks Golf Club, WRA, which is also West Honka Recreation Area, and Cox Culinary Arts doing business as Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue have all applied to renew their liquor licenses for the twenty twenty-one and twen- through twenty twenty-two lic- licensing period, excuse me. Liquor licenses are good from June first, twenty twenty-one through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Notices were sent to property owners within five hundred feet of each renewal. To date, the city received one elite received one voice message in favor of Burl Oaks continuing their liquor license. Burl Oaks currently is licensed to sell intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer, and also has a permit to sell on Sundays. West Honka Recreation Association um currently is licensed to sell three-two beer with the incidental sales of pop candy and bagged snacks. Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue is licensed to sell intoxicating liquor, wine, and beer at their restaurant and attached patio. All are currently seeking to continue with the same operations as they have in the past. The city has received all applications and are currently working on the required process. As a as approved at the March first, twenty twenty-one council meeting, the council approved waiving the fees for WRA and Burl Oaks since their licensing fee was less than five hundred dollars or less. And Buddy Boy Barbecue received a reduction, a reduced fee, excuse me, of seventy-five percent, which equals a fee of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is due to last year's pandemic. And this is a one-time reduction unless the council would like to make a temporary reduction again next year. Staff recommend approv- approval of renewing liquor licenses for Burl Oaks Golf Club, WRA, and Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue with the conditions outlined in the staff report and contingent upon passing the background check.
Thank you, Ms. Lindquist. So this um I'm gonna open up the public hearing. And this uh if anybody is uh joining us this evening and would like to make a comment um for regarding any of these uh renewals for liquor licenses, you may do so at this time. I'll give you a few seconds. Okay, I don't see anybody that's uh running, running to the front here. So anyhow, we will move on, so I will close the public hearing and take it back to council. Council, um I'm looking for emotion to, um unless you have questions or comments, I'd be looking for emotion to approve these three liquor licenses. And Ms. Lindquist, could we make all three uh license um approvals? If that's the council's the um directive, could we make the motion together?
Yes, as long as they're all for, as long as they're all approved, yeah.
All right, so um anybody object to renewing these licenses? Nope. Then do I have a motion to approve the liquor renewal license for Burl Oaks Golf Club and approve the liquor renewal license for the West Honka Recreation Association and approve the liquor renewal license for Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue?
This is John.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. And Pam, I think you came in a close second, so you will a second that, thank you. Motion has been made by Mr. Trumperland and seconded by Mrs. Mortensen to approve the three liquor uh licenses for renewal along with staff's rec- um conditions. And then all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And all, motion passes for O and Ms. Refkin is absent. So well now we'll move on to our business items. And as previously previously stated, we're gonna do the utility improvement project first. And that is um accepting the bids and consider awarding the contract. Mr. Gedwa, I believe that is you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for switching up uh these two items. The reason we did that is um just to present the utility improvements first as those would take place prior to uh the next project, which we'll get to, which is the street improvement project. So um the agenda item we have before you is considering uh accepting the bids and considering award of a contract for the utility improvements project. Um city project number zero four dash twenty-one. Um the city received an open bids for this project on Wednesday, April twenty-first, and a resolution accepting bids and considering award is included. Um as the council's aware, at a special meeting on March twenty-fifth, the overall twenty twenty-one street improvement project was broken up into two projects, oh four twenty-one and oh two A twenty-one, uh in an effort to obtain better bid prices than uh we got at the original bid opening. For this project, the city had seven potential prime contractors holding the plans and received a total of three bids. Um a tabu- uh a tabulation that that shows uh all the bids received for this project is included as well as a letter recommending uh award. Um in summary, the the lowest responsive bid was received from R and R Excavating out of Hutchinson, Minnesota, and their grand total bid amount was seven hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. That consisted of a base bid and a bid alternate. And the base bid is for the the main work, uh the main sanitary sewer work, which is lift station three replacement and then three sanitary sewer force main replacements. The bid alternate was for some water main improvements that we do in association with these street improvement projects down on Stone Bridge Road and Stone Bridge Circle. And we also included that bid alternate with the street improvement project, as we'll talk about later. Um we don't recommend including in the utility project, and we can get to that in a little bit. Um on the next page is a table kind of summarizing the construction costs as this project has evolved um to hopefully uh provide uh the council with enough information to make a consideration of award here tonight. Um from left to right is the original estimate back in February um for the sanitary and water main improvements that were part of the overall project. As the council knows, we received bids on the on March sixteenth, and those uh costs are summarized in the second column. The third column is an updated estimate that was brought before the council when um when the plans and specifications were uh were in front of the council for approval. And then the last column is the low bid received on the twenty-first. And um so I I could answer any questions about the table at this time. Otherwise, I can keep going uh and talk about the recommendation of award, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let me ask the council. Council, any questions up till now? All right, I think it's pretty straightforward. Go ahead, Mr. Gedwa.
Thank you. So staff in the city of Minatrista, uh engineering staff and the city of Minatrista uh does not have any recent or direct experience working with R and R Excavating. And therefore, staff reached out to R and R Excavating and requested a list of references, which is included in the packet. Um they they produced a um couple-page list of recent work of similar type, size, and scope along with contact information for the owners and the engineering companies associated with the projects. Um staff reached out and heard back from now um three of the cities. And um what we heard is that the the company is capable and a competent contractor provides um that good equipment, personnel, and technical abilities to perform the work and get the work completed. Um considering the difference between the low bid and the second low, which you'll see on the tabulation is um a sizable difference between the two bids. And some of the references, interactions with the contractor on uh on project specifications, uh us as staff that will be administering the project, they're just, as we always are on these projects, but will be diligent with the contract administration and really communication, because that's what it all comes down to. So um that's what we learned from the references, that we'll just be very diligent with the construction administration and in the um coordination with the contractor. So in conclusion, um the bids received range from seven hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety cents up to nine hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and zero cents. Um the engineer's opinion of grand total construction cost was um somewhere in the middle there, as summarized in the table above. And again, the lowest responsive bid was R and R Excavating. Um the bid costs for this project are funded by the sewer fund. The alternate costs would be funded by the water fund um if they were uh approved with this cons- with this award. Um the project itself is a unit price contract, as is all the uh city's local improvement projects. And uh that just means that the contractors paid for the actual contract units constructed. Um the construction bid amount is of course less than the updated engineer's estimate. And as the council's aware from previous conversations, with uh the reason we're seeing um some some swings in the estimates and the bid prices is because we're the the market's experiencing some volatility, especially for plastic pipe. Um and so what we saw with R and R Excavating's bid is that the big difference between them and the engineer's estimate and the other two bidders is that they had um a price per linear foot on their plastic pipe that was much better or lower um than than the engineer's estimate and the other two bids. So that accounts for the a big proportion of the difference in the bids. The total project cost, which includes the base bid construction costs, a five percent construction contingency, which is standard, and twenty percent indirect cost, which is standard for this type of project, is eight hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-four cents. I'll take any questions on this prior to presenting the resolution to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Gedwa. Um council, any questions?
I have one, this is Pam. Um how quickly are they able to start this project?
Um so preliminarily, we've just had conversations about uh with with the contractor about their references. And um they did inquire about when this is gonna get awarded, because they're gonna jump on ordering uh pump parts right away, or the pumps, the pumps are backordered quite a bit. Um but as soon as this contract's awarded, we send out the notice of award to the contractor, and we immediately schedule um a pre-construction meeting. And um we'll follow the the start dates in the in the contract. So um basically, as soon as possible as we can orchestrate a pre-construction meeting, which of course is gonna be really important for this project.
So Adam, approximately, when do you anticipate construction to start?
I would say construction probably won't start until the end of May or early June. But again, we're gonna, we're gonna have to meet with the contractor and and uh get their proposed schedule to that that's gonna fit in the timelines laid out in the contract.
Okay, so maybe you can um update the council then as soon as you know, just so we have a um an idea as well as I'm sure residents are interested in knowing that as well. And that's for the utility portion, so, all right. Any other questions?
I have, I have one other question, Lisa. Um Adam, are you quite confident that there won't be a problem getting the inventory needed? Because at one point, did you say there were some companies hoarding product and so on and so forth? Do you feel comfortable with the inventory situation right now?
Um, thank you for the question, Councilmember Mortensen. I won't be the one ordering, but I did we reach out to them in regards to their unit prices for the plastic pipe and inquired about, um just kind of inquired about, not necessarily how they get the low price, but just that if they, you know, if that was the correct price, because our estimate was um not quite double, but a little bit higher. And they responded back that they they received three quotes from subcontractors who are gonna do the drilling work and um that they felt comfortable and confident in their number. And though that doesn't answer your question perfectly, I think um that said to me that they're comfortable providing the plastic pipe for that number per the contract, so.
Okay.
I, yeah, I understand that they'll be able to procure the materials.
Okay. Good question, Pam. Any, any other ones? Ms. Mortensen?
Nope, I'm good with that.
Right, Mr. Trumperland?
No questions. I, I think we did the due diligence here, being there a new vendor for the city checking the resumes uh for their vendor. Uh I guess at this stage, my hope, as I'm sure everybody's hopes is, is that they can obviously obtain those materials and we don't have any holdup, because timing is going to be crucial with two separate projects here with the utilities being done separate from the road, so.
If I could add one thing, Madam Mayor, we included some language in the spec, which we don't normally include on a project because of the market volatility. And basically said that as soon as the contract is awarded, that they can order and deliver pipe to City Hall. And Gary will work with Gary Peters on where that can be delivered, if they choose to do so. And that a portion of that pipe will be paid for upon delivery, and that's just gonna help them secure the pipe. So that, that's something that we incorporated into this project, especially because of the current market conditions.
Good, good call. Anything else, Mr. Trumperland?
Nope, I think it's a good call.
All right, and uh Ms. McGregor?
Um hi, Adam, you did a great job on the presentation. Love the, love the chart, and it sounds like you thought through market volatility and what could happen, so I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
All right, great. All right, Adam, um I'm assuming you are looking for a resolution to accept the bids and consider awarding the contract to R and R Excavating?
Uh yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So council, it sounds like we're in agreement um to accept the bids and consider awarding the contract for the um twenty twenty-one utility improvement project. That would be CP dash zero four dash twenty-one to R and R Excavating in the amount of seven hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Is there a motion to that effect? Yep.
Um we're, the resolution is just for the base bid, so I apologize if I didn't make that clear. It's just for the base bid of six ninety-one, one thirty-nine, twenty-four.
I'm sorry, six ninety-one, thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some of, this is Pam.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion. Is there a second?
This is Anne's second.
I think Ms. McGregor beat you, John. So Ms. McGregor made that second. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Motion passes for O and Ms. Refkin is absent. So we'll move on then to approval of the professional services agreement for cons- um for the utility, for construction of the utilities. Mr. Gedwa?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I I apologize, with this project being split into two, um that professional services agreement and that proposal letter is all encompassing i- both of those. So it, would it be possible to address that after going through um the the co- the bids received for the street project? That way you have the the full costs of the project to reference when reviewing that proposal?
Yeah, the only, the only comment I would make is I'm assuming that you're going to be, or that it's broken out um between the utility project and the street project, just because of the assessments and and also because of the um funds or the accounts where the funds come out of, so. Okay, well then, yeah. All right, well then, let's move on to the um local street improvement project. Mr. Gedwa, that's you again.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah, so the next business item up for the council's consideration is accepting the bids and considering award of the contract for the 2021 street improvement project, which is city project number zero-two-A dash twenty-one. The city received an open bids for the 2021 street improvement project on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. And a resolution accepting the bids, considering award of the contract for this project is provided for the council consideration. Again, this is this, the other component of the split project that was split at the special city council meeting on March twenty-fifth. The city had twelve potential prime contract contractor plan holders and received five bids. A bid tabulation, letter recommendation of award and resolution is enclosed. The lowest responsive bid was received from Valley Paving Incorporated of Shakopee, Minnesota. Their bid amount is comprised of the base bid amount of one million one million seven hundred and one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and zero cents and a bid alternate amount of twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and zero cents. The base bid is the street and drainage component and the bid alternate is again, the water main improvements. So similar to the last item, there is a table summarizing the construction cost as it evolved from one project, engineer's estimate on the far left column. The low bid, which came in high, the updated engineer's estimate after the plans were approved. And then the low bid that was received on the twenty-eighth. One thing to note here is there's a couple asterisks and that's just talking about the water main improvements are an alternate bid and are recommended to be awarded as part of this project. And then the sanitary sewer improvements, there are some costs with the sanitary manholes that are within the roadway that are going to be part of this project and couldn't be broken out into the, the utility improvement project. So the bids ranged from one point seven million to one point nine five million. And the engineer's opinion of grand total construction cost was one point eight million. Again, the lowest responsive bid was Valley Paving. The 2021 street improvement project, the base bid costs are funded by the road maintenance fund, the stormwater fund, the sewer fund and special assessments to the benefiting properties identified in the feasibility report. The bid alternate costs are funded by the water fund. Again, this is a unit price contract and again, they're paid by the actual contract units constructed. The construction bid amount is less than the updated engineer's estimate. The estimated total project costs, which includes a base bid construction costs, five percent construction contingency, twenty percent indirect costs is two point one seven seven million. We have the resolution in here considering a order of the bid and I will take any questions on this portion of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Guebwa. So again, just for clarification, the surface improvements along with in the amount of one million three hundred and fifty thousand sixteen thousand along with the storm sewer improvements of two hundred and sixty-four thousand twenty, those are going to be assessed at forty-eight or we're considering assessing those two items at forty-eight point six or forty-eight point eight percent. The other items will come out at various funds, including the pond maintenance. That comes out of our, our storm sewer fund, but that's a maintenance issue. And so those, that will also not be assessed. I just want to make sure that all of the callers on the, on the line understand that there's many line items here that are not going to be assessed. The water main and also the trail improvements. With that, I just want to say I'm glad we rebid this. I think both projects, since we split them, came back significantly less cost-saving and saving water users as well as taxpayers money. And that's always a good thing. I also want to say, I know that all of us received many emails from residents, particularly on hard scrabble, that would like to see this project move forward. And I think based on these numbers here tonight, I think that's what we're, that's my assumption that we're going to do. They've been waiting a long time. We, we're looking at these projects and this is kind of for Ms. McGregor. You're new here. So just kind of for your information, we've been looking at these projects probably for four years, maybe even more. And for various reasons, one being the two-year county road forty-four project made, made this project, pushed it back. And then last year, we had to push it back one more time because of sewer breakage and issues on Margaret Circle and Shady, Shady Lane and Lakeview. So this is their year for their project and they're looking forward to it. And I'm thrilled about the response and the lower bids. So that's a good thing. So with that, council, do you have any other questions of staff? Okay, no questions. That's a good thing, right? Then Adam, I think you're looking for an approval?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, at this time, we would do a resol- a resolution receiving the bids and awarding the contract. And then we'll go into the professional services agreement. And then at that time, we have all the project costs. We'd go into declaring the project costs and we'll talk about that assessment rate after.
All right. All right, council, then. Do I have a motion to accept the bids and consider awarding the contract to, it would be Valley Paving of, is it Shakopee, I believe? For the 2021 local street improvement projects?
This is John. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Pam.
Okay, I think Ms. Mortensen made that second. So all those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes for O and Ms. Refkin is absent. So next we'll move on to a professional service agreement. I believe that is Mr. Guebwa?
Yep, just, just a couple more from me here. Thanks for bearing with me. I have, we've included a letter proposal. And I won't go through what the work consists of because we've all talked about that quite a bit. And I also just talked about each of the low bidders. And what's important is the second page of the professional, or the letter proposal here, which is the proposed services. And they are split up between the two projects here and listed first is the 2021 street improvement project. And WSB proposes to provide the following construction services, which are consistent with the services we've provided for a number of years here with, in association with, association with these projects. Construction administration and project management. And I'll, I'll go into more detail here because there, there is the consideration of having the two contracts working in the same project area. So weekly construction meetings and meeting minutes always go out after the meeting. Contractor coordination between the two projects. And so that's keeping one contractor abreast of the progress that the other contractor is making and being the middle person to relay that information. Private utility coordination with private utilities that are impacted by the proposed work. Preparing the monthly pay vouchers to pay the contractor for the work they've completed in that month and then project closeout. Project communication engagement is, is the next bullet and it's big, very important. We always start off with the construction kickoff newsletter, which is anywhere from two to four pages with pictures, pertinent contact information, project information, the proposed schedule. Each one of the residents that are affected by the project, get this, it's posted online. And that's the, that's hopefully where they go first. And then from there, they get directed to the right person to answer their questions. And then I worked really closely with Ally, Mrs. Pofus throughout the construction season. And we get a weekly email update as well as any urgent, you know, something comes up in the field, we get those updates posted. And of course, we encourage all residents and anyone interested in keeping up with the project to sign up for that email listserv and the directions to do so are going to be provided in that newsletter. Obviously, construction observation and that's detailed more on the fee schedule, which is attached and shows that our long-term inspector here, Matt Havlick, would be the primary onsite representative, making sure that this work gets constructed per the specifications. The staking, construction staking, our crews will go out and survey the work. And obviously, construction materials testing too, making sure the materials used are meeting specifications. Permit applications through the project and then record drawings when the project's completed and make sure that the data link system is updated with the accurate record drawings of the work that took place. So the fees which are included in that spreadsheet for council's reference are based on a full summer here of a work at forty hours a week and tapering off towards, towards the end when it'll be more grading, finishing up paving and punch list items. We anticipate construction to start in early June and be substantially complete by the end of October for the street improvement project. As for the utility improvement project, it is a very similar scope of services. I do want to remind the council that at the October fifteenth, fourteenth meeting in 2020, when the lift station was incorporated into this project, there was a, the PSA for design services also included the critical inspection on the lift station itself during construction. So those, those services were already proposed on and that is a water wastewater engineer will be onsite to review at critical times that lift station construction. And that would be in addition to our construction representative that's there watching some of the directional drilling work and other utility work occurring. We've got construction survey staking and materials testing associated with this project as well with the utility trenches and getting the that the backfill tested for density is very important during construction. And then in terms of the project management and administration, it is very similar. We will be holding those weekly meetings with the contractor, communicating between the two contracts, doing the monthly pay vouchers, so on and so forth. These fees are based on a six-week construction schedule, assuming fifty hours per week for the first three weeks and twenty-five hours per week for the remaining three weeks. The, the time might fluctuate there with, we, we anticipate the directional drilling work to kind of actually go relatively quick. And of course, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we need to meet with the contractors and and get their proposed schedule that fits within the specifications. But those are the hours we anticipate for observation and administration on the utility project. So the work is proposed to be completed on a cost reimbursable basis in accordance with our current fee schedule. The fee, the fees for construction services are divided into three categories to compartmentalize these and and I just talked through kind of the components to each one of these. We've got construction administration and observation, the surveying and the testing. The surveying and the construction materials testing are just based on what's required by this, by for the contract in terms of how many tests you need to take, what's necessary based on the size of the project in terms of survey staking. And so those are not to exceed fees. The observation and administration fees are an estimate based on what we anticipate and what we've laid out in this proposal for our time to administer this project. And obviously, our goal is to get this project done on time and stay within the confines of the contract. But the, the time of, you know, the contractor's time can fluctuate due to weather or unforeseen circumstances. And so those are, those are estimates that, and that's typically how we propose on this time. So I'll take any questions about the proposal. We do like to include the, the fee spreadsheet to see, the council can see all the folks that are working on this project and, and all of them have been working in Minotrista for many of these recent projects. So I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Guebwa. Council, lot of information. Thank you for the presentation, very detailed. Council, questions? I'll go to John first. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, not so much on the cost. But because we're dealing with digging up roads and doing utility work and then doing the roadwork later or after they're done, other than at Stonebridge is my understanding, how does WSB project getting these projects done? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is obviously the road work has not be done on hard scrabble in Minneapolis until all of the utility work is done. Stonebridge, I think what roadwork is, they've got the utility, the little utility work that's being done. So how do you envision? I mean, would you get started Minneapolis with the utility work or do you have a plan on how that would roll out?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Trumperland. Yeah, I'll explain what the thought processes behind the, the two schedules. For the utility project, we've orchestrated the contract to read that basically they need to start on hard scrabble road with the force mains, the two force mains immediately. And there's about seventeen hundred feet of directional drilling there. And, and it's smaller diameter pipe and it doesn't, you know, if all goes well, it doesn't take too long to drill those in. So they're going to be starting on hard scrabble. Meanwhile, the street contractor will likely start on either Loring or Stonebridge. Because the utility contractor does not need to go on Loring or Stonebridge. Once the utility.
But Adam, I'm sorry, Adam, isn't there directional boring on Loring as well?
Yes. So thank you, Madam Mayor. That directional joint boring has actually been included in the street project. That's a storm sewer line. And we made the decision in order to allow, in order to allow this sequencing to work to actually have that as part of the street project.
Okay, thank you.
That, that allows for two, half the, you know, not by area, but half the project, two of the four streets can be worked on by the street contractor while the utility contractor quickly does hard scrabble and then they move up and they'll have a, that, that's a subcontractor that would do the drilling so they can start on the lift station as soon as they have the materials. And then that, that utility contractor would be up focused on Minneapolis while the street contractor focuses on hard scrabble. And then lastly, the street contractor would proceed north to Minneapolis. So that's what the anticipated plan is. A lot of this time, as I mentioned, is going to be coordination between the contracts. We need to meet with both the contractors. See how they've laid it out. A lot of times they take the framework that's laid out in the specifications and they obviously put a full schedule together with day by day on the work planned and we review that and work through that with them. So that might evolve, but that's how we saw it, see it coming together.
Thank you. That, that makes sense to me, but obviously I'm not a knowledgeable person probably there. But I think obviously the coordinating with the, the two different contracts and and making it work best for the residents, there's going to be a lot of traffic on all of these streets. So sure the residents are waiting with bated breath as to how that's all going to work out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGregor, any questions?
Adam, I, I would assume you've already thought about this, but you said lasting it over. There's no real risk if there are any early freezes, are there?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McGregor. We have requirements in the contract on when the contractor can pave and that's ambient air temperature requirements. And so this happens on every, you know, on a lot of projects, they get, they go into the fall and we really have to get cooperative weather and we, you know, typically are able to get that paved on a nice fall day. It takes a lot of scheduling, but it does happen. And we, we do have requirements. If it's freezing, the, the gravel, the subgrade is frozen, we won't allow them to pave. And so we just need to wait for that, that timing and the weather to allow for paving that would fall within the right requirements. We have our inspectors are out there with a temperature gun checking the, the the temperature of the mix as it gets laid down to make sure it meets the right requirements in order to be compacted. So we monitor all that into the fall.
Thank you.
And so Adam, with that, it's not necessarily the first course of, of not gravel, but the tumors that goes down. It's really the second course that might run into the fall where you would be monitoring it more closely because the first one should be going down sometime in the summer. I mean, August or, or sooner, right?
Yeah, they go down separately and Yeah, they, they go down separately and lots of times a contractor will want to do all the wear course, which is that final layer on multiple streets at once. Whereas they might have done interim paving of the base course, street by street. So yeah, you're, you're right, Mayor Whalen. That's typically the, the final layer is what's typically done.
Yeah, and we're anticipating, yeah, and we're anticipating the final layer to be in the wear course somewhere around September, early to, we're hoping early September, but again, depending on everything, maybe end of September, early October, maybe at the latest?
Yeah, at this time, you know, of course, we'll present that full schedule when we have it from the contractor, but we, you know, Minneapolis at this time is, is going to be the, the latest one. And that could certainly be into, into October for the final paving.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, the ambient temperature, what is that, fifty, fifty-five degrees?
No, it's forty and rising.
Okay.
For wear course, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, good questions. Any others? All right. Yeah, I think as Mr. Trumperlin pointed out, the coordination and making sure that both companies, utility as road and road will stay on course and stay on track and get the project done because I think that's another big issue with the residents. Making sure that they don't have to go through too long of a period, but with that then, council, I think Mr. Gadebois is looking for approval of professional service agreement for the construction services. That would be resolution number zero sixty dash twenty twenty-one.
And then, Madam Mayor, there's the, the separate one as well, just if you didn't recall, the, the one that I asked you to move around is the utility. It's two separate resolutions. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the other one now, so because they've been moved around. Okay, so the first one is approve professional services agreement for the construction services. That would be for the road construction. Is there a motion? Do you want to do them together?
That would be just fine, yeah.
Okay. And then the other one is, all right. Is that okay, council, if we do both of them together? You're okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So it would be resolution number zero sixty dash twenty twenty-one approving professional services agreement for construction services. That would be for the roads and then it would also include resolution number zero six two dash twenty twenty-one. Approve professional service agreement for construction services for the utility projects. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions?
I'm off. This is Pam.
Okay, and I believe Ms. McGregor, you came in second?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So Ms. Mortenson made that motion and Ms. McGregor seconded. All those in favor will signify with aye. Aye, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Motion passes for oh, one absent. And then we move on to our last item for this evening and that's declaring costs to be assessed and ordering the preparation of proposed assessments and calling for the hearing on the proposed assessment role. Again, I believe that's Mr. Gadebois.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, last one here and it's just as you mentioned and we have the, for the background and discussion, as mentioned earlier, this project to the city, the street improvement project is proposed to be funded by the Road Maintenance Fund, Stormwater Fund, Sanitary Fund, and then also special assessments. The city's existing assessment policy states that the benefiting property owners be assessed for fifty percent of the total street and storm improvement costs. However, and this project incorporates some atypical improvements that should be considered non-assessable or staff recommends that they should be considered non-assessable costs. Because they're, they're over and above what's been done on previous projects because of the nature of the streets themselves. These are minor, including work like guardrail installation on Minneapolis Avenue, directional drilling of the storm sewer outlet on Loring Drive and removal and replacement of a long driveway on hard scrabble circle that's going to be impacted by the sanitary sewer improvements. The assessment amounts included herein reflect the removal of these costs and that turns out to be an effective assessment rate of forty-eight point six percent. The feasibility report adopted by the council on December seventh in two thousand and twenty included a preliminary assessment role which detailed one hundred and twenty-one benefiting properties to be assessed at the rates shown below. Stonebridge Road Circle and Loring Drive were proposed at nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Hard Scrabble Road North and Circle were proposed at eight thousand fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Minneapolis Avenue was proposed at five thousand nine hundred ninety-dollar, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. The as bid private costs for the assessable portion of this twenty twenty-one street improvement project is two million thirty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. And so that includes the five percent construction contingency and the twenty percent indirect costs. And so the assessable amount at the effective assessment rate of forty-eight point six percent of the assessable project costs is nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. So that's how we get to the proposed unit assessment rates. Stonebridge Road and Circle and Loring Drive are proposed at nine thousand six hundred and four dollars and twenty-six cents. Hard Scrabble Road North and Circle is proposed at seven thousand nine hundred six dollars and eighty-eight cents. And Minneapolis Avenue is proposed at seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. The assessments will be levied, are proposed to be levied for a twenty-year period at an interest rate of three point two five percent. Two percent over the current average coupon rate of debt of similar term and quality based on the current market conditions per the city's assessment policy. The next step for the council is to declare this cost to be assessed, order the preparation of a proposed assessment role and call for the hearing on the proposed assessment. The assessments are proposed to be levied in two thousand and twenty-one and certified for two thousand and twenty-two. The city is required to call for the hearing and set a date for the hearing. Resolution called for hearing date of June seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Notice would be required to be placed in the, in the official publication and sent mailed to each property owner with the proposed assessment amount. And that's at least two weeks prior to the hearing date. So in conclusion, the total proposed assessment amount at a rate of forty-eight point six percent is nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And we should prepare a assessment role to declare these assessment amounts and call for the hearing.
Okay.
Yep, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, thank you. So I just have a question, a couple things. So whatever the assessment amount is stated to the residents, that's the maximum. It can't go up from there. But the council can hear people's input and, and change it to a, I'm not saying lower, but it could be lower at the hearing. But the other question is, our comment is, do we really need these, these cents? So for instance, why not just round it down to ninety-six oh four and seventy-nine oh six and seventy-one eighty-two rather than adding these little cents onto it? Yeah, I, that's just my recommendation. If the council's agreeable to that, I think we could eliminate the cents on these assessments.
I agree.
I'm fine with it.
No problem. Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then the other comment I would make, Adam, is I'd like to get these notices out sooner than later. I don't want to wait till the last minute and just get it in under the wire of the two weeks. I'd like to, since we know, or we're going to be talking about the June seventh date, if that's the date, I'd, I'd really like to get the notices out to people well in advance so that they have plenty of time to ponder, consider and even make comments if they wish, prior to the meeting.
Yep, we can certainly do that and we'll get on that right away. And the letter that sent is, was modified last year. It's more visually easier to interpret because there's a lot of state statute language. And so we, we received some positive feedback on it. So we'll get those letters out as soon as possible. And just as a point of clarification, you, you want the cents rounded down to zero, correct?
Yes, thank you. So in other words, Stonebridge would be nine thousand six hundred and four dollars.
Yep.
And same for Loring and then seven thousand nine hundred and six, so on and so forth. Okay. With that, those are my comments. Again, I'm, want to point out to those listening tonight, Adam, you'll go through the procedure and, and everything at the public hearing. Does the information for paying your assessments and how that works? Does, is that also and when they have to pay it, if they don't want to incur any interest? Is that all in the letter that you send out?
Yes, it is. And it's, again, we, we've upgraded the format and it looks pretty nice and those important payment options and descriptions are kind of on the sidebar on the right along with who you can contact for questions, which would start with the city's finance director, Mr. Grimm. And then, of course, my contact information is available as well. So it, all of that is included in the letter and then again discussed at the assessment hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, any questions? All right. So what we need is, I need a motion to declare the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of pros- of proposed assessment and calling for the hearing on the proposed assessment role. And Adam, since we eliminated the cents, do you have a new number? Or do we need that tonight?
I wish I was that good. I do believe we need that tonight, correct, Mr. Beatty, for declaring the cost?
Yes, you should, but I, if I'm following, you're just taking the cents off, right?
Right. I'm just asking, do you need a total cost to be assessed or do you just need the individual proposed assessments per property?
Well, I think the resolution should include both, but I, again, I think that ought to be fairly simple, just subtracting the cents from whatever is in the resolution right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I just did it. I, I usually like to get a double check here. I do have the total without the cents. If we'd want to list that.
Okay, what is that?
No, hold on, I guess. Yeah, is there a way we can calculate that at a later time and include it in the? Or do we need to get it right now?
Tell you what, Adam, just give me an approximate or, or what you think is correct and then we will double check the numbers.
That's a good idea.
All right, just bear with me here for a second, please.
Madam Mayor? How would that work then on the, on the resolution? Because we would have to change the numbers on the resolution too, to reflect that. Or we can't really do an estimate, can we? Or is it, if we have it larger, it's not, it's okay?
We're not doing an estimate. We're just double checking the numbers once we do it.
Okay, so if we declare it to be one million one hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars, we just can't assess more than that, correct?
Yeah, hold on, Chris. I'll give you some numbers here.
I do have the number here as well, Chris.
Okay, because I'm going to have to change the resolution.
Adam, I did a quick, this is Allison Fowski. I did a quick calculation based on the units and rounding down to zero cents and I got nine hundred twenty thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
This is why it's good to do this different. I've got a different number here.
I've got, I've got a hundred and forty-four thousand sixty dollars, two hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, three hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars, three hundred and sixteen thousand eight dollars. I'd have to add all those together.
Apparently I'm not looking at the same thing. I'm looking at the resolution.
I'm coming up.
Are you looking at this?
Hold on, I'm coming up with nine hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six.
Agreed, yes.
Agreed.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. Could you, could you repeat that one more time?
Nine hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six.
And that is to be the assessment, the assessment?
That is the total assessments. That is the assessable project, correct?
Okay.
All right. All right. With that, I think we're, we're good then. So with that, is there a motion to declaring the cost of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars to be assessed and calling the hearing for the proposed assessment for June seventh at seven P M.
I'm off. This is Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
This is Ann.
Thank you, Ms. Ann McGregor. I'm sorry. Mortenson McGregor. Okay. Thank you, council members. So with that, all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. Motion passes for oh, one absent. So I believe that concludes all of our projects other than, now, Adam, are you doing the next one, the approval of professional services for well number two?
No, I'm going to drink a gallon of water.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, is this Gary or Allison?
Madam Mayor, it is me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, this evening, this, this item is for the rehabilitation of well two A. Well two A is located in the north system of our water system in Minatrista, just to the east of Hilltop School. This well was constructed eleven years ago and we typically have rehabilitation every seven to eight years. So we're certainly due to get some rehabilitation done on this well. The well rehabilitation generally consists of a contractor pulling the pumps, taking a look at the condition of the pumps and making any repairs or replacements. So without having a visual on the pumps, the scope of the repairs can vary, but the project specifications can be written to accommodate that variation in the scope of the work. There is one hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this rehabilitation. Again, due to the variability and accounting for somewhat of a worst case scenario if we're looking at the, at some higher costs based on the condition that the contractor may be, may find at this well. So this is something that the council might start seeing a little more often as Public Works takes a look through the well system and ensuring that we're getting a rehabilitation program for these walls to maintain the the well production within the city of Minatrista. As such, included in the packet this evening for your consideration is a professional services agreement to prepare the bid documents for the project, perform bidding services such as answering contractor questions and formulating the, not formulating, but gathering the quotes and ensuring the quotes are accurate. And then also construction phase services, as mentioned previously, which includes coordination with the contractor, pay vouchers and so on. The hourly not to exceed price for this, these professional services is nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. If the council authorizes this work this evening, WSB would, excuse me, would begin preparation of the quote documents, which would then be, be brought back to the council for consideration to go ahead and, and request quotes for this project. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Ms. Fowski. Yeah, council, any questions? Yeah, counsel, any questions? All right, it needs to be done. So do I have a motion to approve the professional services agreement for well number two, the rehab? It would be C P O five dash two one.
This is John, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperton, and is there a second?
This is Ann, I'll second it.
All right, I think Councilmember McGregor beat you to it, Pam. So we have a motion, a motion and a second. All those will indicate with aye. Aye, vote aye. Pam?
Aye.
And Ann?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Motion passes four oh, one absent. So next is adopt our ordinance, in ordinance number four sixty five, regulating nonessential water usage upon critical water deficiency in addition to fees to the ordinance and our fee schedule. Is that Ms. Fowski again?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is my item.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the city's water supply plan, it was part of, was updated in conjunction with the city's comprehensive plan. And this fell, the water supply plan follows, falls under the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources purview. And with the D N Rs, the Department of National Resources approval of the supply plan, was a requirement that the city of Minatrista adopt a, an ordinance restricting restricting water usage during critical events. And so the draft ordinance has been posted on the website and is included in the packet for council consideration. This ordinance is very similar to section seven zero zero point three three of the city code, which is water conservation measures resulting from a local declaration of a of a critical water event or a drought, if you will. So the ordinance that's presented for council consideration this evening is very similar. However, this one that the council would be considering this evening is upon declaration of a critical water event by the by the governor. So that's the differentiation between the two. Also included in the packet this evening and as required by the model ordinance, which the, which was used to prepare the ordinance before the council this evening, is a fee schedule for violation of this this critical water ordinance. So staff took a look at some some communities in the area, Chan Hassen and Eden Prairie. I also reached out to a colleague of mine in Andover to get some information for council to consider when establishing a fee or a fine if there's a violation of this of this ordinance. Looking at the fee schedule, which is included in the packet on page one hundred and thirty four, staff's recommendation is to simply utilize the city's current fine schedule for, let's see, I think it's called the the outdoor watering citation. And so we would simply apply that to to the fee schedule for the city and apply that if there's a violation of the critical water deficiency. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has about the ordinance as proposed, the reason for the ordinance or for the proposed fees that staff has included in the council packet. And then also included for if the council chooses to adopt the ordinance, there's also a resolution to publish the the ordinance by title and summary. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Ms. Fowski. Counsel, questions? I'll start with Pam, any questions?
Has there ever been a critical water deficiency, like an emergency called before by the governor?
Not, that's a great question, Councilmember Mortensen. I'm not, I'm not sure if it was a, if it was a declaration from the governor, from the governor's office, but I do recall back in, boy, it was probably around two thousand seven, two thousand eight, where we did have a drought conditions throughout the metro area. And so I know there were a lot of local restrictions on that. And I, and I believe that was kind of the impetus from the D N R to go and take a look at having ordinances such as this in place so that in the event of an area wide drought, that there would be a consistent restriction on utilizing water.
Okay.
So.
And so it's, it really hasn't, there's never been to knowledge, really, an emergency claimed by the governor.
Not to my knowledge.
And when we collect these fines, does the city of Minatrista, being it's declared by the governor of the state, do we keep the money or does it go someplace else, a we find?
I believe it's, since it's part of the city's fee schedule, it stays within the city. It was, again, it was the site, the ordinance that was used was a model ordinance that the D N R supplied, which included the requirement for the fines. So that's a great question, but to my, to my knowledge, the way it's set up, since it's under the city's fee schedule, it doesn't require submitting that to the state, but I can certainly follow back with the council on that.
I would be curious to find out the answer on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. McGregor?
Okay. I had the same question as Pam, but then I'm going to ask. A citation, a dictionary definition of a citation is a summons to appear in court. And so do we think that's necessary? Is that good or bad? I mean, is it good for the person to be able to explain why they're using extra water or is it just a nuisance?
Madam Mayor, I would appreciate if there's a staff member that's been involved with the city's current outdoor watering citation that might be able to provide a little bit of context for the council with regards to the current fee fee that that we're looking to model with the proposed fee schedule.
Maybe Chief Falls, you could weigh in here. Maybe that would be your area.
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is a good question. And so if we're referring to issuing citations for violations of the watering ban or watering regulations, that is something that we have done. I wouldn't say a lot, but we have done that numerous times in the past. Typically, most of those people do receive a citation, just pay the fine and that's the end of it. The summons portion of that is certainly if someone gets a citation, they have, they do have the right or the ability to go to court and state their case if they wish. And then they ultimately, the judge would decide if they're guilty or not.
So technically, it's good.
So yes, it does, because technically, I guess it's a good thing. They get it, they get a chance to be heard if they want to be and they don't have to if they just want to pay it.
Correct, it's just a form of due process, so they have a means to explain their situation and and have a judge decide ultimately.
Okay.
We start with a warning and then if that doesn't work, we go to a citation.
Okay. And then does this include people on a well?
Currently, it does not, only if they're city water.
Okay. And Ann, and maybe Allison, you can weigh in here. I believe this pertains to if you are on public water, so what, public water system. Allison, is that correct?
That is my understanding, I'm just looking for the section of the of the ordinance that defines that.
When I read it, that's what it said, so I'm assuming it means if you're on city water.
Madam Mayor, that, just to clarify, as it is today, yes, that's correct. It's city water only. If you have a well, then you would be exempt from that because it's your.
Right.
That's correct, that's on page one forty of the packet, that the ordinance applies to all customers of public water suppliers.
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
Any, John, any questions?
Did have questions, but Ann asked the same one that I was concerned about was the fine plus citation as to how that worked out. So got my answer, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. My only question is, doesn't or wouldn't this overlap? So if there is a drought, the city would already be doing the restrictive watering? There'd be the watering ban odd, even numbered days. So why, it seems to me like this is overlapping and kind of doubling up on it. What's the difference? Allison?
Madam Mayor, that's a great question. So what the state is looking for, the state did look at the city's current ordinance. And the problem that they had with it is that the current ordinance was only allowed the city administrator or his or her designate to declare the the emergency. When looking at formulating this ordinance to come in compliance with the the D N Rs requirements, I did have a conversation with the city attorney's office about that. And after a conversation and guidance, it was, it was arrived at simply having this ordinance that, so that the state could declare the emergency, but also allowing a local control so that if Minatrista, for example, was really starting to see some, some challenges with water supply within our well system, that the city could go ahead and have the authority to implement it on a local level. On the flip side, if there was something happening on a statewide level that the governor chose, would choose to issue a declaration to put this ordinance into effect before the city of Minatrista. So it's, it does seem duplicate, to be a duplicate, but there it, it really comes down to who has the authority to call the the emergency.
Okay. All right. And we basically, if we want to get our permit for pumping water, basically, we need to pass this ordinance, is that my understanding?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's a good question. So the the city's water supply plan, which was approved back in December, the D N R requires the city to adopt an ordinance, an ordinance within six months.
Okay, so, and we get a permit, kind of FYI, we get a permit, annual permit, and they permit us to pump X number of gallons of water a year. I think it's what, two hundred and sixty three or two hundred and fifty three million gallons a year? So they want to make sure that we stay within those parameters. And so anyhow, in order to get that permit to pump our water, they make, put certain requirements on us. And this is one of them. All right. Any other questions or comments? Anybody, are there any changes you wish to make to the ordinance? Okay, otherwise, I look for a motion to adopt ordinance number four sixty five, regulating nonessential water usage upon critical water deficiency as authorized by Minnesota state statutes, et cetera, et cetera. And addition, and also the addition of fees to the fee schedule as presented in our packet and authorizing number four sixty two for the violation of the nonessential water usage upon critical water deficiency ordinance. And then adopt a resolution to publish the ordinance four sixty five by title, title and summary. Is there a motion to all of that?
This is Ann, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, is there a second?
This is John, I'll second.
All right, a motion has been made by Councilmember McGregor and seconded by Councilmember Chumperton. All those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chumperton?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, motion passes four oh. Thank you very much. And now I think we can move on to our solar, I think that's the, yeah. So now we'll move on to amending our city code regarding our solar energy systems. I think this is Mr. Abel or Mr. Wolfen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, David here, I can go ahead and take this. So as the council may recall, we had a application come in for a site plan review for a ground mounted solar energy system within the agricultural preservation zoning districts, district. Members of our planning commission and city council questioned whether our our zoning ordinance at that time clearly and accurately expressed the intent and understanding of the city regarding the solar energy systems. So hence, what the council ended up doing was placing a temporary moratorium on solar and ground mounted solar energy systems in the agricultural preservation district. What that did is allow the council a twelve month timeframe to further study the issue and clear up some of those things that were brought up by the planning commission and council during the review of that site plan. So what staff did is put together ordinance number four sixty three. We took all comments that were raised during that site plan review application. And then also things that were further discussed with the planning commission and council at meetings that had happened since that site plan was submitted. A quick recap, the planning commission first reviewed ordinance number four sixty three at their February twenty second, twenty twenty one meeting. We took comment from them, had some very good discussions and then took, took the ordinance to the council for the first time for their eyes and and discussion at your March fifteenth, twenty twenty one work session. Good discussion and comments were made at that meeting. And the planning commission then got it back to them at their April twenty sixth meeting, where they did ultimately hold the required public hearing, which is mandatory when you are making amendments to chapter five zoning code section, which this, of course, is located in. They ultimately did hold a public hearing. No public comments were made during that public hearing. However, I will note, which is also part of your packet, there was one written comment that was submitted to the city about the ordinance. That was included in your, in your packet as well as the planning commission's packet, but ultimately, no one did speak during the hearing. And ultimately, the planning commission recommended unanimously that the council adopt ordinance number four sixty three as presented to you in in this pack this this evening. So it's been been a few months of of good work, good clarification, good discussions. And I think we've gotten to a good point in clearing up some of those issues that were raised during the review of that that site plan application. So all in all, this this whole process seemed to work itself out quite nicely. The the site plan obviously was denied. Appears that the the person who was pursuing that has has gone away. And so here we are this evening with hopefully what appears to be a happy ending with the adoption of ordinance number four sixty three. We do also have a resolution there for you to publish that ordinance by title and summary. Staff can certainly answer any specific questions that council has. And want to just thank everyone for giving all your good input and feedback through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. Ms. Mortensen, I think you were the planning liaison, were you not?
Yeah, yes.
Do you have anything to add to staff's report? Any comments?
Yeah, David did a great job of recapping it. There was no comments from any residents other than the letter. The committee did ask to make sure that the council's question about the corner lot and the double footage lots were addressed in the revised ordinance. And they all felt comfortable that it was. And that was about it, it was a good discussion and, yeah, it went well.
All right, thank you. Other council members, Councilmember McGregor or Mr. Chumperton, any questions or comments?
No, I'm really happy, thanks Pam for put, or whoever put the, no, David, I guess, put in the important letter regarding. put in the important letter regarding solar energy. That was very, it was excellent.
Okay, and John, any comments?
I like the new ordinance. I think it most appropriately matches what our residents wanted and what probably was really the intent back in 2015. It just didn't get written the way I think the intent was. But I've attended the original, I've attended three planning commission meetings in, listening in anyway. And I think with all the questions that have taken place from November through now, I think we've got it right, and I appreciate everybody's effort in putting this one out there.
Yep, I would concur. All right, we have several people on the line, but I don't, not sure that they're here for the solar energy. If anybody would like to make a one-minute comment or have some additions for the solar energy, you can do that. All right. Again, thank you, David. I think a great presentation. And also, I think I concur with John's comments, a good, a good revised ordinance here. So council, what is your pleasure here? We are looking for a motion to amend the city code regarding solar energy systems, which would be resolution number 0652021. And then also publish the ordinance, which is number 463 by title and summary. Is there a motion to that effect?
One question, even though I see it listed in the resolution, I just want to be sure. When we have a, what do we call it, the interim ordinance that kind of, that suspended doing any solar? So that may happen in the future on other things. But when we have this new ordinance come along, so it's automatically written into the resolution that the new ordinance supersedes and/or deletes, or whatever the legal term is, the interim ordinance, is that correct?
Mr. Beatty?
I can, yeah, Madam Mayor, I can comment. Mr. Trumperland, it's not automatic. I added that to the bottom of the ordinance to make it clear that the adoption of this ordinance also repeals the moratorium. I think that was the intent, because the moratorium, as Mr. Abel said, was to extend until 12 months, which is the maximum statutory time, or until a new ordinance became effective. But I just wanted it clear that the adoption of this ordinance also repealed the other one. So if you adopt the ordinance, and if that's the council's intent, then yes, it will kill two birds with one stone.
Good question. Thank you. All right. All right.
I would approve.
You would make a motion?
I would, I would make a motion to approve that.
All right, thank you. And then, is there a second?
I'll second. This is Pam.
All right, so Mr. Trumperland made the motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, then all those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Motion passes for all. One council member absent. With that, that concludes our business items, and we'll move on to our administrative items. We'll start with staff reports. Our city administrator, Mr. Barone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I have three short items for you. Our next council meeting is two weeks from tonight, which is Monday, May 17. Tomorrow, the mayor, Chief Falls, and I will be participating in the Public Safety Communications Committee with representatives from St. Boniface. And then Wednesday, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Peters, and I will be involved in the Water Tower Progress Meeting, which takes place at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday. So with that, I think all we have is, from the rest of the city staff, is Ms. Fowski.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Ms. Fowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This morning, my apologies, I had a memo drafted that didn't make it into the packet. So I sent it this morning, and it's a summary of the road fund balance based on the bid prices for the local street improvement projects. And then included in that as well was an estimated roads levy for 2022, as well as a recommended budget for Jennings Cove. The council was interested in seeing this information to discern if a project in the Jennings Cove area would be palatable for the council. As, as outlined further in the memo, we would want to get started on some of those plans and specifications for that project. I'd like to thank Councilmember Shumberland for reaching out earlier today with regards to clarifying what all the recommended budget for Jennings Cove includes. As noted in the memo, the expenditures for the 2021 local street improvement project includes the 5% construction contingency and 20% indirect cost. The recommended budget for Jennings Cove, that $763,000, also includes the contingency and indirect costs. For budget purposes, we typically look at a 10% contingency. So we do have contingency and indirect costs included in that. We did take a look at the components of the local street improvement bid to, and compared that with what we used for the budget, the budget number for Jennings Cove. So we're still, we're keeping with that $763,000 number, which was updated earlier this year. So also included in the packet, based on conversations previously with the council, is a tentative schedule for the 2022 street improvement project, assuming that the project would proceed in the Jennings Cove area or for any other project area where a portion of the project costs would be assessed. The reason being, to communicate this, is that there are many components to a project where a portion of the costs are assessed, where there's a necessity to have, for example, a public hearing and a public hearing publication requirements, and then additionally, notification requirements for both the public hearing and for the, the assessment hearing further on in the project. And then, aside from a project where a portion of the project costs are assessed, there's also a requirement for advertising a project of this magnitude. The state statutes require for these, these size of projects that they are advertised for three weeks. So we want to build that all into the project schedule and look at, with the, the goal of doing a bid opening in, in January of 2022. So I wanted to include that information in that memo so that the council could have an idea of what we would anticipate as a project schedule if we move forward with the Jennings Cove project this, for 2022. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you. Yeah, we were looking at number one, dollar amounts and, as well as schedule, so we could see how this all lays out. I'll start with council. Council, questions, comments? Mr. Trumperland, I'll start with you.
No, I got my question. I was just concerned that I wasn't sure that 763 was a fully burdened number and to compare apples to see where we truly projected we'd be at. I just wanted to be sure of that, and Allison answered my question, so I'm comfortable.
Okay, and Pam?
So are we going to talk and vote more on this at the next council meeting? Are we going to do something more to get this started, or?
We could make a decision tonight, unless you want more discussion. But if, I guess the thing is, we want to give residents, so if we're going to go with the neighborhood meeting on June 7, we want to give residents a good, oh, at least two to three weeks. See, two weeks might be a bit short notice, but if we wanted to give them ample notice, we probably need to have a good idea of what we're going to do next year and want to move forward with that, to let them, give them some time if they want to attend that neighborhood meeting.
Okay, well, I think it's important to get going on this as quickly as possible, because we don't want to get caught, you know, running behind early in next year.
Right, right. So you would be in favor of moving forward and, and having, and keep in mind, the neighborhood meeting is kind of to gauge the interest of the residents and to get their input. And it's not until after that that we would be making a final decision as to the project and the scope of the project, et cetera.
Okay. I'm all in favor of that, then.
Yeah. I mean, keep in mind, too, we don't want to have a neighborhood meeting telling them that we want to do this, and then we pull, and then they're all in favor of it, and then we pull the rug out from under them. We want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're capable of doing it, number one, and number two, that we are serious about doing it. So, Ms. McGregor?
Yeah, I'm in favor of doing it. It's fine.
Okay, all right. So Allison, do you need a motion, or I should ask Mr. Barone, do you want a motion to move ahead with the neighborhood meeting on June 7?
Good question, Mayor. I'm not sure if we need one, but if you want to do one, it wouldn't hurt, so let's just do that.
Okay, and then the other question, typically, a neighborhood meeting, and also since we have a public hearing that night, should we do the neighborhood meeting in lieu of a work, work session? So it would start at 5:30, and it would be an open house, so to speak, or a neighborhood meeting versus a work session?
That's fine, Mayor, but just understand that if you do that, then, you know, you could be pushing back other items to a different meeting. But, you know, if that's the prerogative of the council, we're fine with doing that. That has worked well in the past, so.
Council, what's your interest?
I would agree with doing it at the work session. We can always, if we've got button topics that we need to catch up on, I would consider in future work sessions that we start a little bit earlier.
Yeah, yeah. Ann, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay, and Pam?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's shoot for June 7, 5:30, an open house or neighborhood meeting. Please notify the residents involved as soon as possible so that they can put it on their calendar. I know June gets to be pretty busy with a lot of school functions and celebrations and whatnot. So the sooner we can get the word out, the better.
That sounds good. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for the direction on this item.
All right, great. All right, that concludes our staff reports, I believe. So we'll move on to council reports. I'll start with Ms. McGregor. I wanted to say thank you for jumping in at the last minute.
Oh, that's very nice. It was, it was a wonderful meeting, great people, and very interesting. Kristy Pexa talked from the Laker Pioneer about all types of multimedia that they're able to do, and she gave prizes and had lots of handouts. Ryan Carter talked about the Spirit of the Lakes 2021 festival that's going to happen in July. And then Jay Souls talked a little bit, he's the owner of Allen Almas, and talked about how he apparently bought it in December of 2019, right before COVID hit. Real rough year.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, Allen Almas and their cruises are fabulous, so would hate to see them not be around.
Right, right.
Okay, Pam, anything?
I just wanted to thank Ann for going and filling in for me at the WCC meeting this, this week. And I attended the personnel meeting on the, I think it was the 6th, to discuss, was it then? Anyways, I was there. To discuss the police lieutenant and sergeant's contract.
Yeah.
Oh, on the planning committee, on 426.
Yeah, great. All right, great. Yeah, I will be attending the Public Safety Commission with St. Bonnie representatives tomorrow morning. And then also, I will be able to attend, I think in person, the Northwest League this, this month. So I'm looking forward to that. It's been a while. With that, we are concluded. If there is a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All right, so Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Ms. McGregor seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. I vote aye, Lisa Whalen, Pam Mortensen?
Aye.
And McGregor?
Aye.
And John Trumperland?
Aye.
Great, we are adjourned, and thank you very much, council. It was a long meeting, good questions, excellent. Great, thank you for your leadership. Good night.
Thank you.